Great. If you came to speak on an item tonight, please sign up on the sheet on the table in the back of the room. That's how we keep track of who is here and so we will call names in order that they were signed up. Looks like everyone has signed in who intended to. Thank you. And we have.
Tonight's invocation will be led by Commissioner Walker and the pledge will be led by Commissioner Baker. Please join us.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Fill us with your grace and continue to remind us that all that we do here today is for your glory and for the service of our community. We act these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Planning Commission meeting, March tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, is now called to order. We encourage you to wear your mask while indoors and observe the six-foot seating, social distancing. When your name is called, please come to the podium, address your comments to the Planning Commission, not to the audience. Any questions you have will be answered in the order they have been received and once everybody has been signed up to speak. We understand that you may have strong feelings, one way or another. Out of courtesy, and unless it's your turn to speak, please remain silent. Please refrain from applauding, cheering, booing, or other verbal outbursts. This is a fact-finding hearing. If a previous speaker has stated the points in which you wish to make, you simply acknowledge that so the hearing may proceed. There is no need to repeat what has already been said. The applicant will have five minutes to speak. Other speakers each will have three minutes. Please respect the time limit. If you intend to speak, please sign up at the table in the back of the room. Names will be called in order that you have signed up. Mr. Starter, please call the roll.
Raymick?
Here.
Janet?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Stafford?
Here.
Baker?
Here.
Kirkie? Greenway?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Hobby?
Present. May I have a motion to approve last month's minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved. Question? Yes.
Second.
Take that motion.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The agenda is now approved. The first item on tonight's agenda is the consent agenda. Items placed in this section are applications which demonstrate compliance with all applicable city requirements. These items shall not involve discussion by the Planning Commission or the public. The consent agenda will be voted on in one motion. However, if two commissioners so desire, individual items may be discussed and/or be voted upon separating from other business. May I have a motion to approve of tonight's consent agenda with staff findings and recommendations?
So moved. Second?
Director Selman, would you read the item on the consent agenda?
Thank you. Item number one is on the consent agenda. And this is a request for lot line subdivision approval for properties located at four oh one and four twenty-one Broadway Street. The subject properties are approximately zero point nine two acres, zoned M one, light manufacturing district, classified linear commercial corridor, and are located in Board of Directors District Number Two. The recommendation is for approval with one condition. That condition is to approve the requested side yard setback variance from the required twenty-five to eight and a half feet as depicted on the Broadway Properties Incorporated Lot Line Adjustment Subdivision Platt prepared by Arkansas Land Surveyor, Mr. Justin West, and dated February fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. That concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 The consent agenda is now approved. Item one is approved. The next item on tonight's agenda is new business. There will be opportunity for the applicant and for the public to provide testimony. Director Selman, would you introduce the item?
Thank you. Item number two is SPA twenty-two zero forty-four. Large-scale development site plan review for demolition of an existing structure and construction of a new commercial development with associated parking to be located at approximately one twenty-six Adcock Road.
A motion approved merely gets the matter on the floor for discussion. A motion to approve and a second do not mean that it's necessarily in favor of the particular, I'm sorry, particular application. May I have a motion to approve item one?
So moved.
Item two?
I'm sorry, item two.
So moved. Second?
Thank you. Planning Commissioners, please hold your questions until everyone has presented. Director Selman, would you present the staff report on item number two?
Thank you. The applicant is Mr. Rico Harris with Harris Architecture, representing property owner Lance Smith. They're seeking Article Two Large-Scale Development Site Plan Review approval for demolition of the existing residential structure and construction of a multi-building commercial project on the subject property. The subject property is approximately one point six six acres, located at approximately one twenty-six Adcock Road. This property is outside the City of Hot Springs' limit, but within the city's adopted planning area. It has no zoning. It has a future land use classification of residential suburban and is located in Garland County. The subject site is on the even side of the one hundred block of Adcock Road. There is a four thousand nine hundred and two square foot residential structure, previously used for commercial and other activities. This proposal would demolish the existing structure and replace it with two ten thousand two hundred fifty square foot multi-tenant commercial buildings with parking on the subject property and unlimited parking on adjacent land by agreement. The property has one existing access drive from Adcock Road. Development plans illustrate access to the site is unchanged and is depicted as two drives off Adcock Road. Surrounding property uses. To the north are the First Care Clinic, HS Imaging Pain Clinic, and Hamilton West Family Medicine. Northwest is Lake Hamilton Family Medicine. To the south, Single Family Residential. To the east, Single Family Residential. And to the west, Commercial Pay Parking Lot, Single Family Residential, and Memorial Baptist Church. Traffic counts and road data were obtained from the Arkansas Department of Transportation and show that Adcock Road is designated with a functional classification of major collector. The most recent average daily traffic, or ADT, is sixty-four hundred. Looking at the Institute of Traffic Engineers Trip Generation Tables, the most recent version, it would appear that use on this site could range from as low as just over one trip in the peak hour with something such as a medical equipment operation in there. Or if a pharmacy was to locate there, could be as high as eighteen trips, and that would be per one thousand square feet. That would be multiplied times twenty, if you have twenty thousand square feet. So the trips could range anywhere from two hundred to eight hundred additional trips per day where we have already sixty-four hundred. A shared parking and drive agreement proposes that property owned by Dr. Kevin Hale is to have unlimited access for the property owned by Dr. Lance Smith. This five-year agreement provides an additional access from Airport Road and additional parking that augments the required parking spaces. Finding is that the proposal to demolish an existing forty-nine hundred square foot structure and to construct two multi-tenant commercial buildings on the subject property at one twenty-six Adcock Road is subject to the jurisdiction of Planning Commission because it is located in the adopted planning area. Adcock Road is a two-lane major collector as classified by Department of Transportation. The site plan and other materials submitted comply with the requirements of Hot Springs Code, Section sixteen, four twenty-two, and other Hot Springs codes applicable to this review, subject to compliance with conditions of approval, and there are seven conditions of approval. Recommendation to Planning Commission is to approve an Article Two Site Plan, SPA twenty-two forty-four, to demolish the existing structure and construct two new multi-tenant commercial buildings, subject to the conditions, because when these conditions are applied, the application complies with the requirements of Hot Springs Code. Number one, the development site shall be constructed and developed in strict accordance with the approved site and development plan, including, but not limited, to location of buildings, drives, parking, and landscaping. Number two, all construction and construction activity are to be accomplished in strict accordance with all applicable approval conditions and with the minimum standards, codes, rules, and regulations and policies as may now or hereafter be required or enacted by the City of Hot Springs, the State of Arkansas, and/or the United States of America, including the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, whether or not submitted for staff review or Planning Commission approval. Number three, required permits shall be in hand for Garland County Stormwater, City Utilities, and RDOT prior to any work beginning. Number four, all exterior lighting shall be fully downcast, full cutoff fixtures, and shall contain all illumination on the subject property. Exterior lighting shall neither negatively impact adjacent properties nor pedestrian or vehicle safety along Adcock Road. Number five, Seventy West Fire Department requests three conditions based on this, based on what uses ultimately go in there. A, if a mercantile occupancy building of twelve thousand and one square feet and above, it must be sprinkled. And this would require at least one hydrant and proper fire department connections. B, any occupancy with hospital-type beds with mattresses must be sprinkled at five thousand square feet. C, business of a medical clinic or ambulatory care in nature, or a business with bulk amounts of compressed gas, carry certain additional requirements which must be coordinated with Seventy West Fire Protection District prior to occupancy. Number six, a completed and signed, five-year minimum, shared parking and access agreement must be presented for Planning Department review within thirty days of Planning Commission approval. And number seven, site plan approval, multiple building or large-scale site plans approved by Planning Commission, according to Hot Springs Code, shall be effective for one year from the date of approval. Prior to the approval's expiration date, the Director of Planning and Development may extend the original site plan approval for up to two one-year periods upon the applicant's written request. Planning Commission approval of any project that has not fully secured all required permits within the period set forth shall be null and void. This approval will be effective until March tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. That concludes the staff report.
Thank you, Director. Will the applicant please come forward, state your name and address? And if there's anything you would like to add to the record? You have a maximum of five minutes to make your presentation.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm Rico Harris with Harris Architecture, fourteen oh one, Malvern. We appreciate the Planning Department's recommendation for approval. We also appreciate the concerns that some of the community have about an increase in traffic in that area. And I just, I want to point out a couple of things. I really, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I am an architect. And my opinion is that traffic is not going to be increased appreciably, and maybe not at all. And there's a couple of reasons for that. First reason, I think Director Selman mentioned, is that that property originally was constructed as a residence, but as far back as we could research, I think to about two thousand and twelve, it's operated as some sort of business. It was a furniture store. It was a church and something else before that, I think. The other reason, and my client Lance may want to elaborate on this a little bit, but his plan for this development is to relocate existing functions that are already in his business and some of the other businesses up closer to the north into this development. So he's just moving some people that are kind of on top of each other into this development. And so I guess I would entertain any questions that Commissioners have this time?
I do.
Go ahead.
I do want to know what's going to be in the centers.
I know that one business is a medical billing office and another potential is an optometry clinic. No plans to put a pharmacy back there and absolutely no plans for any sort of restaurant, nightclub, anything like that. We're not going to have any grease traps. We're not going to have any accommodations even for that type of business.
What about medical supplies for home use?
Medical supplies? Not at this time.
Other businesses coming in new to the area?
I don't know.
There are portions that are not accounted for yet, so we can't speak to that.
Okay.
Another thing, actually I forgot to mention. You know, Lance Smith is the owner of Smith Drug, and he's a good neighbor, good member of that community. And he wants to continue to be that. And this development, I don't know if you noticed in the drawings, well, you can see it right there. We've pushed the buildings pretty far back to the west, which is away from Adcock. So there's a fair amount of landscaping and green space on Adcock right there. Because we kind of wanted to do what we could to meet the owner's requirements and at the same time maintain the kind of pastoral setting that Adcock Road is right now.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now call those who had signed up to speak.
Madam Chairman, we did receive late this week a few correspondents who are against the development. One is Shirley Willis, who commented on traffic already being a nightmare. Linda Castaldi also increased in the, concerned about the amount of traffic on the road, size of the road, and increase in foot traffic, saying that in the last years, a number of single-family and multiple housing have caused this traffic. Let's see. Needs to be a long-term plan on Adcock Road to ensure public safety. There is also a copy of a notice regarding tonight's meeting. I think most of you have probably already seen that. And someone with the address Memo Curry, number one, also opposes the development based on too much traffic. Oh, okay, Sam Curry, one oh four Windy Point.
Director Selman?
Yes.
There was one additional letter that I don't think you have a paper copy of from Dr. Randall Roth.
Okay.
And that was included in the updated packet that was sent out earlier.
Okay. Any correspondence that was received prior to noon yesterday was posted in a revised packet. You all have received those.
Thank you very much. Actually, Mr. Roth has signed up to speak, so if you will please come to the podium, state your name and address. You have a maximum of three minutes.
Thank you. I'm Dr. Randall Roth, and yes, I did write the letter. I live at one nine two Adcock with my family, which is directly next door to the subject property. My letter is included there. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to read it or not. We've lived there for about ten years. My daughter and my son are here with me. When we moved onto that property, there wasn't a whole lot going on there. We did have a neighbor next door that was very, they weren't very desirable neighbors, so to speak. We ultimately ended up buying that property as a damage control to prevent damage to the value of our property. And we had the house next door demolished and removed. And I think it's improved the look of the area. The house was old. It was in bad shape. It was actually used as a daycare, and the fire department had shut them down. The house was built, I don't know how many years ago, but they had shut them down for violations. And they, I guess they didn't have the money to correct those violations. So they ended up closing it down and using it as their personal junkyard to throw their, you know, all of their waste materials that they had. So we bought that for that purpose to prevent reducing the value of our home. And our home is a nice home next door to the subject property. I have no, you know, I'm a very entrepreneurial person myself. I don't have objections to people going into business, expanding. In fact, I encourage it. But it's right next door to us, and we've got a lot of traffic that comes through that area. The businesses that were there before that they were mentioning, TCB Construction was there. There weren't usually like a lot of customers coming in and out. It was just the construction company. The trucks would be in and out. They weren't, you know, we didn't hardly notice them that much. There was a church there that was there for a short time. It was a very small church. They were usually there, as far as I can remember, usually on Sundays. So it wasn't like they were, they always parked on the far side of the property, and we didn't have a problem with that. It wasn't, it was a very, in fact, the place where they met and assembled was like in the living room of the original house that was there. From what I understand, my wife had actually gone over there and talked to them and, you know, got to know them a little bit. and, you know, got to know them a little bit. And there was no problem with that. The other business that was there was the Loft. It was an antique furniture store, and there were very few cars that came in and out at that time. The traffic was almost negligible. In fact, I think that's why they closed the business, was because they weren't getting any traffic. So our concern, can I go a little bit longer?
Yes, go ahead and finish that.
Our concern is that it's already difficult to pull out of our house sometimes in the mornings. During the mornings, the traffic backs up past our home. Traffic is just one of several concerns. So just to get some ideas of what the community felt, we actually put a notice out, because we felt like the notice that was posted was very small and was inconspicuous, where a lot of people wouldn't even look at it. So we wanted to see what the community thought, to see if we were, you know, thinking correctly. And we did the petition, and we got close to 200 names of people that objected to this. And it's, most of the people on the petition are either on Adcock or they're back off of communities, off of Marion Anderson, that have to exit their, you know, their homes to get out to, you know, they go on Adcock to get to Airport Road. So my concern with this is that it's going to cause, it's going to cause some bottlenecks in the traffic. It's my, another concern is what it's going to do to my, the value of my property. Now, on that petition, I mean, whether or not somebody might say legally it's a valid petition, it does give us a sentiment of what the community feels like about this project. And, you know, again, I don't have anything, I don't even know the owner of the property. I just know that, you know, that it's been a great concern for our family, and we're just trying to protect the value of our home and have some peace and quiet. And one other comment that I might make is that they were mentioning about the lighting in the area. Well, the parking lot that was put behind our house, we didn't even know it was coming there. It's kind of off to the side of our property, back behind the subject property. The lighting that's back there is like a beacon. When that was put in, it's a very high-lumin lighting that completely illuminates our property. And for security purposes, I guess you could say that's good, but it's like, it is, it is like blinding to us. And I don't usually complain about things. I'm a, if you ask people that know me, they'll know that I say very little about anything. But I felt like this warranted, you know, me coming and discussing. That's pretty much all I have to say. If anyone wants to read my letter and get my concerns there, please, please do so.
Thank you very much. Members of the commission can ask questions. Is there anything anybody would like to add at this point?
Do we have a copy of the signed petition?
I believe it's in our packet.
It's in your packet.
It's in our updated packet.
I don't see the signatures.
No, there was just the petition.
I didn't see the signatures.
Do you have that?
Do you have a copy of the petition with the signature?
Well, we're not even to that point yet.
Thank you.
Those that have signed up have done so. The public hearing is now closed. We may discuss amongst ourselves, commissioners, any other questions, concerns, comments?
Okay, I will.
Yes.
I live in the area, I live in the area off of Adcock since 2000, and everything is changing in the county. Hale wasn't there when we moved here. They certainly weren't there when we moved here in '83. I think the fact that Dr. Smith, who runs an extraordinary pharmacy, they are extraordinarily helpful, very helpful, I'm not doing well with words today. I don't see that he's going to create a strip joint or anything that's going to create after-hours business that would be upsetting. I know that the city lighting codes are different, and this will be the city lighting codes where they do not affect like the bright lights that you're talking about in the parking lot. I don't know that you'll notice them, you might, I don't know. But I think that to hold back progress in the county is not fair to the county. I don't know the other businesses, and Dr. Smith isn't going to move his there, but I can't see that a medical bill that's filling, an eye doctor is going to create a lot of traffic. They do scheduling. How many people go to see their medical billing office, you know? I go about twice a year. I don't think that the potential of traffic on Adcock is worth closing this down. And I do think that...
No, the hearing is closed.
I do think that there is a stoplight at Adcock. There's also a stoplight at Marion Anderson. So whichever way you go, you've got a stoplight to get onto Airport Road. And actually, Marion Anderson wouldn't be easier, more convenient, and safer for most of us to use.
Well, I'm going to have to agree with you. I mean, we're growing.
Yeah.
And I think it's a blessing that our overlay brings this county site in, within our grasp.
It does mean that the building is going to be safer, that landscaping is going to be better.
It applies more codes, so things that might have not been great in the past, I think our city codes are going to really help this property do great for the neighborhood.
I agree. And I hate to tell you, Doctor, but I do think that some of the other things along Adcock are going to change. Those houses across the street from you that have been closed and locked and unoccupied for five, six years, somebody's going to come and buy that, and that's going to change the area. I think we all have to get used to our neighborhoods changing.
Yeah, I think those traffic counts are appealing to developers. You're talking 6,400 cars a day.
When we had the, when they built the Walmart out there, I don't, I lived there and I was concerned about that, and, but I haven't seen an increase that affects lifestyle.
Well, there's no question that Adcock is already overburdened with traffic because it's a major feeder into Marion Anderson. I do not think, I can't imagine that this would make a statistically significant difference in the traffic counts.
I agree.
You know, if it's 6,400, I can't imagine. And it's hard to hold it against the applicant, but there's a bottleneck right there with the road that doesn't have a turn lane. Most of the traffic looks like it's going to come off Airport, and they're turning right into this.
I agree.
Commissioner Remick, any other comments?
No questions. I've just always considered Adcock as kind of a shortcut from Airport to Marion Anderson, and I think that's what it's mostly used for. And, you know, this business is not going to make a difference with that.
Commissioner Baker?
No comment.
Commissioner Walker?
No comment.
Mr. Sackler?
No comments or questions, thank you.
Commissioner Erickson?
No.
Well, thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve item two?
We have a motion to approve. Would you like to call the roll?
Oh, yes, I apologize.
You ready for the roll call?
Yes, thank you.
Janet?
Yes.
Erickson?
Approve.
Stafford?
Approve.
Baker?
Approve.
Greenway?
Approve.
Walker?
Approve.
Remick?
Approve.
Hobbie?
Approve, thank you.
Okay, the vote is eight-zero to approve, and the application is approved.
The next item on the agenda is the director's report. Director Selman?
Thank you. We mentioned last month that we had an opportunity for training through the National Association for Planners. The national conference is being held this spring and will be broadcast electronically on May 18th, 19th, and 20th. And I heard from three people. I heard from Bart, Lori, and someone else, Carrie? Hillary, okay. Now Hillary, you will not be on Planning Commission when that occurs.
I know, that's why I wrote to you. Thank you very much, but no, thank you.
So is there anyone else who is interested? I need to get the registration in by April 1st, so we do have a couple of weeks. But those sessions will be held all day long on the 18th, 19th, and 20th. You can view it in the comfort of your home, or you can come down and join us. Whatever works for you.
I have gone to training sessions, and they're really, really helpful, really useful. You know, I, A, won't be on the board, but B, even if I were on for one more month, I don't think you should spend your money on me. But the rest of you guys, I would encourage you to take it.
Carrie, are you available after May?
I am, but just not that week, unfortunately.
Okay, all right.
Kathy, I'm going to let you know tomorrow.
Okay, that would be great.
I'm going to look at possible.
Okay. And Michelle?
I'm out of town.
Okay.
Me too.
And Rick?
I just don't know at this point.
Okay.
I will check my calendar.
Well, let me know before the end of next week, and we'll go ahead and get people signed up. And look forward to having you take advantage of this. It'll be terrific. And I believe that is all that we have to report. Well, we do have one more thing to report. We had two planners approved in our budget for this year.
Oh, yay.
And one is starting on Monday. And that will be a planner to assist people who are not familiar with planning and applications and trying to bring together the knowledge base between the building permit side and the planning side. So the people who only do this maybe once or twice will be able to have a problem-free experience. As problem-free as we can make it.
That's great, congratulations.
I hear skepticism there. I will prove you wrong.
It's not skepticism.
All right. And we thought we had someone hired as our long-range and historic preservation person, and just heard yesterday that for family reasons, she's unable to relocate at this time. She was out of state. So we're sad about that, but have reposted it and have high hopes on that position as well. That's about it.
With no further business to discuss, we are ready to adjourn the March 10, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Thank you.